Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. We will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 15th, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Okay. I wonder if any of our firefighters could direct people if need be. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
President Vartan?
Present. Okay. I will ask firefighter Chris Esposito to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length, unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular enclosed session minutes of February 7?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay. On to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's great to see such a huge group. Along with the New Jersey State League of Municipalities, I am offering three $1,000 scholarship opportunities for high school juniors and seniors in Summit through the Louis Bay II Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship Competition. It is a statewide competition that centers on the theme, quote, "what my municipal government does best," and seeks to highlight elected officials' hard work and encourage future municipal leaders. The deadline to apply is March 10th. The competition is open to all high school juniors and seniors that reside in or attend school in Summit. Please visit the city website for more information. Forms 1040 and 1040SR are now available for free pickup at the Summit Free Public Library. The De Corso Community Center in New Providence is offering free tax preparation by appointment from February 7th to April 12th on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from 9:30 to 2:30. Shared services. Please call 908-665-0046 to make an appointment. The De Corso Community Center address is 15 East Fourth Street, New Providence. The program is open to taxpayers of all ages, AARP membership is not required, and the volunteer accountants are IRS certified and trained every year. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Administrator Michael Rogers.
Council President, thank you. I just want to give two pieces of information. One, tonight is a provided update on our 2023 municipal budget. City organization has been working on this since last fall. We always strive to keep our municipal service costs at or below levels that we previously have been, and we will continue to do that this year. Unfortunately, we have three of our major cost drivers that are making it particularly difficult to provide a budget that is manageable. We have dealt with this. We've known this information for some time. We are dealing with, as everybody is dealing with in their lives, inflation. But unfortunately, our state health benefit insurance is going up considerably, close to $900,000. Our debt service payments are close to $1 million, and our pension are over $500,000. So just over $2 million of new costs this year. So that's what we have to contend with. We have been working at this for some months now with the Finance Committee, our Capital Projects Committee. We've met with all the department heads to see what ultimately we need to provide our departments with, to provide adequate services in this community. But we face great challenges this year with those three cost drivers, among a couple others that are significant. Revenue, fortunately, is going to be up this year, which is good, non-tax revenue. But this gap that we're facing is a challenge, and in my two-decade career, it is one of the greatest difficult budgets I've had. But we're going to get through it. That's really the main point, is that we will get to a place where the burden on our taxpayers will be minimized to the extent that we can. Finance Committee is working very hard with myself and the CFO. I just want to prepare you where we are in the process, where we're still going through this, and I plan on presenting this budget to the council and public in April. We'll get there. We have some work to do, but I just wanted to give the public an update. As far as just the last item, the Summit Free Market. We just added an additional weekend event on Friday, February 24th, from 12 to 2:00 PM at the transfer station. Summit residents can bring usable, reusable yard sale quality items to share and take whatever they want or need at no charge. Residents must have a permit to access the train station to attend. Permits can be purchased online through the City of Summit Park and Services Agency. Please go to cityofsummit.org for more information. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. So I'll start my report with some quick words of congratulations to our city clerk. Today is her 32nd anniversary working for the City of Summit. Yes, yeah. None of this happens. None of this happens without.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. So at our last council meeting, we expressed sympathy for the murder of Councilwoman Eunice Dwomfer of Seererville. The next morning, Councilmember Russell Heller of Milford was shot and killed outside his place of work. We sent a letter expressing our condolences, and Council President Lefev called to express her gratitude. Our hearts and prayers are with her and the Milford community as they grieve. Also, this week marks the first anniversary of the invasion of Ukraine. We honor the bravery and sacrifice of the Ukrainian people as they defend their lives, their homes, their sovereignty, and their democracy. Whether it's in a neighboring community or halfway around the world, we must reject violence and do all that we can to promote justice, equality, and peace. Next, you'll notice again that we do not have any official action related to Maple Street closure on the agenda, but I want to make sure that we're providing regular updates on our progress. So I'll turn over the report to Councilmember Jamie Levine to do that, and we've got a bunch of people waiting for other stuff, so let's keep it snappy.
Thank you, Council President. I will keep this very snappy. So I will briefly share with you where we are as far as with respect to Maple Street for this coming year. So 2023 is a reset year coming out of this pandemic. The year is different because it's no longer an emergency, and the analysis is different. What we know is a group of people don't want Maple Street closed at all. Another group of people want Maple Street closed permanently. But the vast majority of people who have weighed in do want Maple Street closed for some period of time during the warmer months because they enjoy the vibrancy and the sense of community that it brings. So let's talk about duration for 2023. Council is yet to refine a consensus on how long we are pursuing for closure, but I'm comfortable saying that we are not pursuing a six-month closure, as has been done the past three years. Most likely, we will land somewhere in the three-to-four month range for closure. This is what compromise looks like. We are yet to take any formal action. We haven't applied to the Department of Transportation for our road closure. We have not written a resolution or an ordinance. What will be different in this reset year during the closure? The main difference, as I've stated, is duration. Next, there will be some fees in place for restaurants. Our council president has tasked the Finance Committee, as well as the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee, to come up with a fee structure for the restaurants. So that is Councilmembers Miniger, Allen, and Hamlet will be involved in that. What else will be different this year during the closure is there will be stricter enforcement of how restaurants maintain their spaces, and we're contemplating even the possibility of some type of fine if not adequately maintained. More attractive barriers, we all agree on that. Also, ways for more opportunities for other Summit businesses to take advantage of the space when it's closed. We've been advised that there's nothing legally precluding us from doing that. Also, can be more public spaces. Some, hopefully, renderings will be commissioned soon. And also, we'll continue to meet with other business owners, landowners, and residents of Maple Street to help mitigate the factors that are downfalls to them. Things, for example, like strict adherence to a noise ordinance, alleyways that get blocked, alleyways that, first of all, get used a lot more because Maple Street's closed and some of the other surrounding streets for access to the dwellings or the buildings. We need to find a way to really ticket people who block those alleyways and make it just a little more fair for people who are affected. Also, as a reminder, there's not going to be any parklets on Union Place this year, so that'll decompress that area pretty significantly. Why are we talking about a shorter duration? It's largely when school is not in session, so it's least disruptive to daily operations for most people. I think we can all agree that traffic and parking are far less of a burden in the summertime. Also, it's the definition of compromise. And the people who don't support the closure at all, we heard you, which is why we're dramatically reducing the duration. Another thing to consider that's coming that we're tracking closely is the PSENG work, the changeover of the underground gas lines will eventually come to downtown, and we're tracking that closely so we can anticipate it, and it can have the least negative impact on anything. So that's another reason why we would shorten the closure. We're also just pursuing a closure for 2023, not something recurring and ongoing. Why? Well, number one, we have Broad Street West on the horizon, the potential for building and its existence could impact traffic patterns downtown. Again, this is a reset year coming out of a pandemic. And also, right now, it's legal to serve alcohol on Maple Street because the parent restaurant, their liquor license extends onto Maple Street, and that expansion permit will continue to be in effect until November of 2024. So we wouldn't want to start to plan beyond that. Lastly, I'll just briefly mention the legal pathway to closure, and then we could touch on safety as well. But as far as legal, we've learned that there are two ways to close a road. The first is creation of a pedestrian mall, and I can only speak for myself, but not all my colleagues, but I think we all agree that formation of a pedestrian mall implies permanency, and we're not pursuing permanency. We're just pursuing something short-term. So the DOT has another route that you can take, which is what we're pursuing, longer than 48 hours, but shorter than a full-time closure. Lastly, I think many of us have had conversations that we realize the public isn't privy to, but that we have with staff and people, our first responders regarding safety. I've certainly had numerous conversations, and I don't want to risk paraphrasing, but I'd also just like to say that at some point, I think it would be really helpful for the public to hear, to have the chance to have Chief Evers, for example, speak and just summarize. But if you don't mind, I could quote you. I could paraphrase our conversation or give you a moment without putting you on the spot too much.
So when we have an ordinance or a resolution related to this, we're going to have memos from the chiefs that are there with it, and I think we can also get an update out to the public in the interim about that as well. So in the interest of moving the meeting along, we'll skip that for now. Anything else you want to add right now?
No, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then I want to give a minute to Councilmember Hairston to talk about Chief Davis.
Thank you, Council President. In this, our last meeting during the month of Black History Month, I want to piggyback on the efforts of the Summit Police Department, who earlier this month proudly remembered the contributions and accomplishments of Summit's 12th Police Chief Lonny Davis, the second African-American municipal police chief in Union County history, and Summit's first black chief of police. Lonny Davis joined the Police Department as a patrol officer in 1955, and rose through the ranks, becoming a sergeant in 1968, a lieutenant in 1978, and a captain in 1986. He remained at that rank for five years, serving as Operations Division Commander prior to being appointed Chief of Police in 1993. Not only did he have an impressive career, but he was also an exemplary member of the community, a lifelong resident of Summit, leaving only for his four years with the Army's 82nd Airborne. He attended Summit's public schools, was a member of Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church, he served on the Board of Trustees of the YMCA, he was a member of the Rotary Club and former president of the J.C.'s. He was also a member of the National Organization of Black Law Executives and a life member of the Police Benevolent Association. He and his wife Marion Spalding raised four sons, and I know one is here today, Reverend Davis. Although Chief Davis died suddenly of a heart attack at the age of only 60, and this was three months after he was appointed to the agency's top post in 1993, it does not diminish his legacy to the City of Summit and to the Police Department, where he served faithfully for 38 years. Those who remember Chief Davis, as well as the wonderful newspaper articles that were written about him at the time of his death, reveal a man who is universally admired and greatly respected throughout the City of Summit. Chief Davis will continue to be a source of pride to the department, to the entire Summit community, and I say to the state of New Jersey. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. That'll conclude my report, and we'll move on. We're going to take one resolution up first, and that's from Safety and Health, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. So Safety Number One is Resolution 10150, and as discussed in closed session, this resolution approves the promotion of firefighter Christopher Esposito to the rank of Fire Lieutenant in the Fire Department effective today. I am pleased to move this resolution.
I am pleased to second it.
Okay.
Let the show begin.
Any comments from members of council?
I just want to say congratulations.
Yes.
We're lucky to have you here.
Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
It all was a...
Fair enough. Fair enough. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Of course, the motion carries. Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you for coming tonight. One of the great privileges as fire chief is to hire new firefighters, watch them grow at the probationary level, and watch them throughout the firefighting career become more part of their job. One of the honors is promoting one of our own to the ranks, the first leadership role. So tonight, we're going to promote firefighter Esposito to rank Lieutenant. He's going to be in charge of five firefighters. He'll answer up to battalion chief, but more importantly, he sets the tone for how fires go on the crew. He's actually the first supervisor here in the respect of all the firemen today. He had this training. So with that, I'm happy to bring forward Esposito for his promotion to Lieutenant.
All right.
Chris Esposito started with the Summit Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter in Chemical Engine Company Number One in June 2006. In July of 2012, he became a career firefighter. Chris holds both a BA and an MA from Seton Hall, from which he graduated the MA in 2011. Chris has over 20 years of progressive emergency service experience at the local, county, and regional level, including over 10 years of full-time professional firefighting with the Summit Fire Department. He is the current executive delegate for Summit FMBA Local Number 54, and was elected as the New Jersey FMBA State Secretary in September of 2022 at the annual convention. He serves on the Volunteer Firefighter Interview Panel and Mentor Program, performs as the department's CPR and firefighter bailout instructor, as well as serving on several committees. He regularly attends the National Fire Academy, and he participates in the National Fall and Firefighters Memorial Weekend with Team Summit. He holds certifications in the following areas: New Jersey Division of Fire Safety Certified firefighter number one and two, Incident Management Level Two, Fire Inspector and Fire Official, Fire Instructor Level One and Two, Hazmat Technician/IC, Firefire Officer number one and two, New Jersey Department of Health Certified EMT. He has received over 30 letters of commendation from his supervisors, civilians, and various professional organizations, commended for valor by the State of New Jersey, Union County 200 Club, St. Barnabas Burn Foundation, New Jersey State FMBA, and the City of Summit. Chris, newlywed on February 4th. Congratulations. Chris and his wife Jennifer reside in Berkeley Heights. Jennifer is a learning disabilities teacher consultant in Riverdale, New Jersey. Please congratulate Chris on his promotion to Lieutenant.
I, Christopher Esposito, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will bear true faith
and that I will bear true faith
and allegiance
and allegiance
to the same
to the same
and to the governments established
and to the governments established
in the United States
in the United States
and in this state
and in this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will faithfully
that I will faithfully
impartially
impartially
and justly
and justly
perform all the duties
perform all the duties
of the position of Fire Lieutenant
of the position of Fire Lieutenant
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities
so help me God
so help me God.
May I say, I have had the great, great privilege of doing these swearing-ins of new officers, both police and fire, and promotions. I have never seen a room packed like this. And it's really not about me. It's all about this guy. So I'm delighted. He's always a pleasure to see around in the community and in City Hall, and I am very, very proud of him. And I'm proud of all of you for all the hard work that you do in our community. We are blessed to have every one of you. So thank you very much.
Well, congratulations, Chris. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief. My suspicion is that some people might want to use this opportunity to shuffle out before our bond ordinance. Are we back on camera? This looks more like the size of a room of people that wants to talk about a bond ordinance. Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
All right. Okay. On to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Finance Ordinance for Hearing?
Ordinance Number 23-3274. Bond ordinance providing for phases 2B, 3B, 4, 5, and 6 of the local unit's allocable share of the flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, by and in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $4,920,000 therefor, and authorizing issuance of $4,920,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Okay. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance provides for Summit's share of the flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, a project designed to improve and extend the life of the facilities and equipment that handles our city's wastewater, along with others, as part of that joint meeting. This project ensures that this critical component of our infrastructure is ready for major storm systems like Hurricane Sandy, a storm that pushed these facilities very close to disaster back in 2012. The bonds issued as part of this ordinance, in the amount of $4,920,000, will cover Summit's share of that project, after which FEMA will reimburse 90% of that cost. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
A second.
Okay. All right. The hearing is open. Do we have comments from members of council on this ordinance? Nope. Comments from members of the public? Bond ordinance? Yes, sir?
I'm a landlord of...
Bruce, can you turn the microphone back to you just a second? Thank you.
My name is Bruce Lurkoff. I own a property in Summit, 26 Maple Street. Just a quick question. Is part of that money going towards upgrading the sewer system on your report?
As far as I know, it's just the equipment in Elizabeth, not necessarily the actual sewer itself.
So nothing as far as increasing the sewer size or anything else?
No.
Is that in the plans?
In the plans of the whole project? Any of the phases? I don't know.
I mean, I defer to the city engineer, but any plans that related to our infrastructure in the city would be part of our capital budget. Any of the infrastructure that would be upgraded in our city would be in our capital budget.
I'm just curious, do you know if increasing the size of the sewer capacity is in the plans?
This particular, on this bond ordinance?
No, I mean, in general.
No. So we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, but we have about the potential for about 7.5 million gallons a day of sewage to come out of Summit. On an average day in Summit, we use about 4.9 million gallons, right? So that's where we are on our sewer usage.
I'm not talking about sewage. I'm talking about rainwater.
That's a different, totally different system. Stormwater and then sewer.
That's what I'm asking. Is that...
That's unrelated to this bond ordinance.
It is.
Yeah, correct.
Is there any plans to look at that capacity, whether or not it should be increased in the future?
There is a stormwater plan that we have. Now, I would defer to our city engineer who can provide...
I was just wondering, because from what I understood in a couple of past conversations with the engineer, he had mentioned that it's, I guess it's built to a 75-year flood once a year, having an issue with it maybe once every 75 years, where it could be reach capacity and overcapacity. And now, with the change in weather and the environment, obviously, sometimes it happens a couple times a year in a bad season. And I was just wondering if they were planning on, I think in other parts of town, they might have gone to 100-year type of capacity. they might have gone to 100-year type of capacity. And that's why I was wondering if they were talking, any plans for the center of Summit? Because I know the center of Summit has been flooded many, many times in the last five or 10 years.
So, so I'll ask you to send an email to, to Aaron, and we can connect you on that. But the, it's, it's, that's really a totally separate system from what we're talking about here. Yeah. So what we're talking about here is the, is the joint meeting, which is our, which is our, a shared service for our wastewater treatment facility, which is located in Elizabeth. And it nearly flooded in Superstorm Sandy in 2012. And this money is Summit's share of the project that's going to be 90% reimbursed from FEMA. So it's really a totally separate kind of thing that we'll follow up with you about. Any other comments from members of the community? Nope. Okay. I think we're ready to close this hearing. Yes? Okay. And we'll move to ordinances for final consideration. There's only one, and please read that, Madam Clerk.
Yes. Ordinance number 23-3274. Bond ordinance providing for phases 2B, 3B, 4, 4, 5, and 6 of the local unit's allocable share of the flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, by and in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $4,920,000 therefore, and authorizing issuance of $4,920,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance that provides for Summit's share of the flood mitigation facilities project, the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties. Having closed the hearing just a moment ago, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
A second.
Okay. And we'll take a roll call vote on this, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Okay. That ordinance is adopted, and we're moving on now to ordinances for introduction. And we have one from Safety and Health, Councilmember Fox.
I think the clerk asked.
Oh, you have to read it first. I was so close.
I learned it after a few years.
Yeah. City Clerk, please, please read that ordinance.
ID number 10151, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-11.2, Stop Intersections Designated.
Okay. Now, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you. This ordinance is ID 10151, and this will amend the city code to make the Prospect Street Blackburn Road intersection a four-way stop with the addition of stop signs on Prospect Street. This four-way stop is intended to reduce motor vehicle crashes and enhance pedestrian safety. The public hearing on this ordinance will be on March 7th. I move this ordinance for introduction.
I second it.
Okay. We will take a roll call vote on this.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. All right. Everybody knows the hearing for that is the next council meeting, March 7th. Excellent. Thank you. Onto resolutions. We have two from Finance, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. The first one, this is number 10118, and this resolution authorizes emergency, emergency temporary appropriations for the municipal operating budget. The statutory language required in a resolution like this uses the word "emergency," but this is a regular occurrence, not an emergency. These temporary appropriations are to help the city, to help fund city operating expenses and payroll expenses until we have adopted our 2023 budget later this spring. I move, I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All right. Hearing none. We're going to do a roll call vote on this one, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Har, Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Okay. That motion is adopted. And next up, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 10197, and this resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations for the sewer utility budget. Just like the last resolution, statutory language required with this type of action uses the word "emergency," but this is not an emergency. It's a regular occurrence. These temporary appropriations are to allow payments that are due before adoption of the 2023 budget later this spring. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote for this one as well, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Okay. That motion is adopted as well. Capital Projects and Community Services, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10146 authorizes execution of a shared services agreement with New Providence for 2023 through 2025 with the extent, with the option for a two-year extension to oversee our sewage. The cost for this is not to exceed $198,570. Each municipality is required to have a sewage engineer, and they're required to inspect the system 365 days a year when they are alarms, when there are alarms, when there are problems. The, this shared service agreement can allow someone, just a new Providence, to come and manage this very efficiently. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Yes.
I just have a couple of questions on this. I think it's important to educate the public, because I truly didn't understand what this was until recently, but through you, Council President, or maybe you can answer this. So, do they handle like 100% or is this always an add-on?
I will turn it over to you.
Because, Aaron, I know when we went and looked at the actual sewage facility, which was so exciting, and we looked at all the alarms, like, I like, I noticed that the engineer that is required is like a C3 engineer, is that correct?
C3 operator, yes.
C3 operator. So do we have one of those in the city staff, or do we not have one?
No, through you, Council President. We don't. It's a very difficult license to get. There's not a lot of C3 operators that are, that are out there. We used to have a lone individual who did it, and then he became part of a company, and then we wound up with a much larger firm about 11 years ago, and that's when we pursued the shared service, so. So, yeah, we do not have someone on staff, but New Providence does, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you for explaining.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And number two, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10158 allows us to accept the donation of a rapid rectangular flashing beacon, which has been donated by Oak Knoll School. Oak Knoll School, we're grateful for their generosity, and I'd like to point out that they've covered the cost of this safety endeavor entirely, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? And I'll just add my thanks to Oak Knoll School as well. I love these beacons. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. Thank you. And moving on to number three, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, ID number 10211 serves to appoint two candidates to the Mayor's Partnership for Public Arts. Jaclyn LaSarasina and Michael Seum are the two candidates. I know Mayor Radist and Councilperson Fox, who is our council liaison to that committee, each have shared very enthusiastic endorsements for these candidates, and we're glad to welcome them to this commit, this committee, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Thank you to Michael and Jaclyn for their willingness to serve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. Okay. And last one, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, Resolution number 10162 serves to appoint Catherine Head to the Recycling Advisory Committee. She has been involved with the Environmental Commission for a long time, already attending some meetings, very, I know Councilmember Fox is very enthusiastic about her, and I move to adopt this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second this one.
Okay. And any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion carries. Onto law and labor, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. Introducing Resolution ID number 10169 to authorize the execution of an annual license agreement for the use of sidewalks for Select Restaurants Incorporated. An application was submitted to the city clerk's office to operate a sidewalk cafe. This applicant is a liquor license holder, and it is necessary to sign a lease agreement with the City of Summit to allow the applicant to extend their liquor license premises to the area in front of the restaurant in order to serve alcohol. There is an annual charge for this particular use, which is based on a per-table fee structure for a term commensurate with the period for which the sidewalk cafe license is issued. And this is pending approval of the 2023 sidewalk cafe plan, and the applicant will have to provide proof of $1 million liquor liability policy. I recommend this resolution be presented for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Come on up.
She's got to see you a little closer. Bruce Lurkoff. Question, the sidewalk, this is to allow the restaurateurs who have a liquor license to serve on the sidewalk. Is that what it is? And how about the street? Does it cover the street?
So this specific agreement, Michael, do you?
It covers, it covers the sidewalk.
Okay.
Because the location of the three that are listed here are, two are on Union Place, and one is Wimbury's on the corner of Ken Place Boulevard and Springfield Avenue.
Okay. So in no case does it allow them to go into the street? That would be an ABC situation?
It is, but those are also covered by the COVID-19 expansion license.
Okay. And does the ABC have to approve the sidewalk also, or not?
No.
No.
That is done through the COVID-19 expansion permit process.
All right. So the street is by the ABC.
Right.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from members of the public? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries as well. And I imagine, if it's okay with you, you could bundle the next two?
Sure.
All right. All you.
Okay. So, Council President, through you, I am introducing ID 10168 and ID 10180 to authorize execution of annual license agreements for the Office of Summit. It's also known as Pietino Neighborhood Bistro and the Office Tavern Grill. Application has been submitted to the city clerk's office to operate sidewalk cafes, and the applicant is a liquor license holder, and it is necessary to sign a lease agreement with the City of Summit to allow for the applicant to extend their liquor license premises to the area in front of the restaurant in order to serve alcohol. There is an annual charge for this particular use, which is based on a per-table fee structure for a term commensurate with the period for which the sidewalk cafe license is issued, pending approval of the 2023 sidewalk cafe plan, and the applicant providing proof of a $1 million liquor liability policy. I recommend this resolution be approved by council.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. Excellent. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And those two motions carry as well. Thank you very much. Moving on to Safety and Health resolutions, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Safety number two is Resolution ID 10187. As discussed in closed session, this resolution confirms the mayor's recommendations for promotions as follows. Lieutenant Mike, Lieutenant Michael Triber is promoted to the rank of captain. Sergeant Christopher Medina is promoted to the rank of lieutenant, and Police Officer Jeffrey Peer is promoted to the rank of sergeant. These promotions are as a result of vacancies that were declared on December 6, 2022 stemming from the retirement of Captain Rick Proctor. All of the promotions have an effective date of March 1st. I enthusiastically move this resolution.
And I second it.
Okay. Comments from members of council?
I'd just like to say that there are three wonderful officers, and we're so lucky to have them.
Agreed.
I just wanted to say that I, I've known all three of these gentlemen for quite a while and highly recommend their promotions, so.
And I, through you, Council President, I just want to confirm their swearing-in is March 7th? Is that correct, or is it for at council? No?
I'd like to tell you, I remember off the top of my head. I think it's March 1st.
March 1st, but, no, it's the effective date, but the chief just held it as 10 hours. Six?
What the chief is saying is?
It's March 6th at 3 o'clock.
Swearing in.
Or 3:30, 3 or 3 o'clock.
Swearing's in March 6th.
Yeah.
At 3:30. Thank you.
It could be 3 o'clock. I'll double check, and I'll make sure that Rosie will make sure that we send an invitation to all members of council.
Okay. Excellent. We have to vote on that still. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries, and we are on to the second under Safety and Health, Councilmember Fox.
Right. Which is actually Safety Number Three, Resolution ID 10175. This resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application to the Junior League of Summit in the amount of $5,000 for the purchase of COVID-19 response equipment and supplies, including decontamination equipment and personal protective equipment. There are no matching funds required, and I move this resolution.
I second it.
Okay. Comments from members of council?
I neglected to say that, you know, we are very appreciative of the generosity of the Junior League.
Sure. Sure. Agreed. Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public on this one? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That motion carries. And on to the last one, Councilmember Fox.
So this is Safety Number Four, 10189. This resolution authorizes the submission of a grant application to the FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program, and this is in the amount of $117,948.75 for the purchase of portable radios, and there is a 10% match required for this grant. These radios will allow for improved communications within the Summit Fire Department, as well as with other communities with whom we have mutual aid agreements. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council on this?
I actually have one, Greg.
Sorry, yes?
Yes, through you, Council President, and you can either answer, or Chief, you can answer as well. The one question I had on this is the P-25 compliant portable radios, are they, how different are they than the ones that we currently have now?
Chief?
One of the main features is that we're on the state system now, and it enables us, sometimes in Summit, there's a lot of dead spots in town, it enables us to grab the closest tower more consistently for our out-of-town mutual aid partners, automatic aid companies. We pretty much got enhanced communications on the fire ground where some areas of Summit are kind of challenging to communicate with. Real good piece of equipment. A lot of times, our big communication, even though we communicate well, in the engines, when we get inside of buildings, sometimes it's a challenge to get communications out there into the commander. This is going to greatly increase our capability of getting out there, reaching our commanders on scene.
Thanks for explaining that. Maybe you can bring one down to my house, because I have no cell phone connection down there. Anybody who talks to me knows that I have to, like, go up the hill to talk on the phone, so. Bring one by my house and try it out. Thank you very much for explaining that.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments, members of council? Comments from members of the public? All right, none on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Council President, I would like to pull out one item and just point out-
Sure.
Something.
Is it the same one?
Same one.
We'll start with you.
Oh, wait, did you, I'm sorry.
No, it was, it's, we'll start with you.
Okay. So I just wanted to point out that we have a change order where for, we're going to get $70,000 back from the Summit Park Line Bridge project that's going to go back into the Park Line Foundation's account for further work on the Park Line. And, you know, it's always nice when we have a change order and a project comes in under budget, so I like to point them out when they happen.
The nice direction to have a change order, very nice. Thank you.
I just had a question on 10164.
Okay. Go ahead.
This morning I had a chance to speak with Rita regarding the question that I had, but she wasn't able to answer me because she wasn't feeling that well this morning, so my concern with 10164 is regarding parking. I just wanted to get clarification through you, Council President, maybe Andy or Michael can answer this, but I'm trying to get a better understanding for how much revenue SDI gives parking during events that are during parking hours, like for instance, on a Saturday or on a weeknight, maybe starting at 4:00. I just, I don't truly know where to find that information, so.
I think I'll punt to Michael on that one.
Yeah, so I think you said Saturdays when we have events, and I think there might be instances where there is some level of reimbursement, but I, it's usually directly involving Rita, so since she's not here, can't answer it. Sundays, clearly what this one is, there's no charges that day for the public anyway, so there wouldn't be any charges to SDI to use those spaces. But I'm not 100% certain. It does sound like they would, they should, at least, whatever spaces are being occupied by whatever they're doing, but I don't ever really see it directly. It's usually through the parking services or if the governing body mandates it.
So since this is my committee, can we look at this another day?
Yeah.
I'm just not comfortable with, unless somebody can convince me otherwise, I'd-
So we have it, we have it on the agenda here for tonight, so we would have to vote on, we have a motion and a second on the whole consent agenda, right? So we have to, we have to take a vote, right, Ron, on this now, at this point? So I think we should do that, we should do that, and if there's dissenting votes, we'll have them.
Wouldn't we need a motion to table this one?
In the consent agenda, we have a motion on the whole consent agenda.
Right.
Oh, so we have to vote on the motion as a whole?
Yeah, so we have to vote on the consent agenda as a whole, and that's where we are.
Right, then you're going to vote to table this. Is that what you're saying?
No, no, the motion was to accept-
The motion's on the table to-
The motion was to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Yeah.
You can do that.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote on this then.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear that I'm clear on Councilwoman Hamlet's question. So are you asking, do we get revenue back from lost spaces during SDI events?
Correct.
Okay, so, and we don't know, has it been historical that we would get money, revenue from them? Is there any, is there a-
I believe we get, don't quote me on this, and I could call Rita, but I believe in the budget, I feel like it was in the tune of $3,000 maybe per year for parking?
That sounds like the number for the holiday parking.
For the holiday.
That's the holiday parking, lost revenue and marketing. So this, this, yeah, I mean, I think we have to, we have to circle up with SDI and understand, you know, I don't think many of the events at all are happening during times when there would be charge for parking anyway. I think most of them are in the evening or on Sundays, but we can, we have an SDI board meeting tomorrow morning, and we can, we can ask about that then and there.
Looking, looking at these, it looks like a lot of them, you know, maybe it's one hour from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. that, you know, where there's a loss of revenue for one hour in, you know, or one of them where it was 4:00 to 5:00, you know, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So it's really just on the margins as far as the amount of-
But we should look into it, because I mean, the Family Fun Night is at the Bank Street Lot.
Well, yeah.
And that starts to set up a deal.
Right.
So we could, we should look into that.
We could look into it, sure.
We'll raise it tomorrow morning with SDI, and I don't know how much we do get, but we, you know, the biggest one that takes up parking is the farmer's market, but that's on a Sunday when we don't get revenue anyway. But we should look at the other ones, for sure. And I'm sure that they have, but I just, I'm sorry that I don't have the, you don't have the answer right now.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Any other comments on this now, on the consent agenda? Comments from members of the community? Okay, so let's do a roll-
Wait, pick up.
I'm sorry, yes, come on up. Come on up, sorry.
Jay Brinkerhoff, 12 Westminster Road. Just following on Councilwoman Fox's comment about the Park Line, to bring in a project under budget in these inflationary times is pretty tough, so I think a couple of people deserve a shout-out. One is Gautam Joyce and his firm, JCMF. Gautam is a Summit resident, by the way. He served as our construction manager. Did a great job, kept a careful eye on the contractor. He's a pro, his whole group is a pro, and he was significantly important in allowing us to deliver this, you know, about 12% under budget. The second one is Aaron, Aaron Schreiber. He was with us all the way on this, thank you, Aaron, and, you know, coordinated with other city officials, with the police department when we need roads closed, but also was another, you know, expert set of eyes and ears on the contractor. So this contractor knew he had, he better get it right, and he did, thanks to both of those. And I'd just like to add a third comment, which is of course, and I think you all probably know this, that $70,000 will be plowed back into the project for the next phases, which are in planning stages now. So I want to make sure, I wanted a public shout-out to those two who really made a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Council President, and a shout-out to Jay Brinkerhoff, too.
Yes, of course, of course, thank you. Come on up, Claire.
Good evening, Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, 11 Sunset Drive. I did not expect to have my SDI hat on this evening, but I can tell you that in a couple of months, council will have to approve SDI's budget, and I would submit that any parking costs could be discussed there, separate from the events themselves. I think that council can consider them separately. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will have to vote as a council on SDI's budget, which we'll get information on shortly.
Do we know if there's a timeframe, you know, is there, is this a time as of the essence to get this approved?
I think the first event on here is April, so, I mean, there is some time. But respectfully, I believe the motion is on the table already. It's been seconded, so you're voting.
Yep.
Get some grumbling over there. Yes?
Go ahead.
Somebody?
So, Councilmember Hamlet just pointed out there may be some other things that might be wanted to, want to be updated in this as well. If it isn't a time of the essence thing, I would like to, I don't know if I'm allowed to withdraw a second, if it's a problem.
The one thing I noticed was specifically the farmer's market, it says that you can only have locally grown food, and I wasn't sure if we wanted to update that with all the other vendors that are in there now, but maybe that's not a big deal.
We just had our farmer's market, I'm on the farmer's market committee, we just had our meeting, and it's a, in our mission that it's New Jersey-grown items and things that are produced and made in New Jersey, and so we stick, we stick, we adhere to that, so that is still accurate. We turned down a couple of different vendors, long conversation, a couple of different vendors that had really exciting stuff, but they were in New York, and we said, meh.
Yeah, so I think Claire's point was a good one. The points that were made up here were all good ones. I think we can, we can consider the events that are happening now, because they're part of the consent agenda, and then I think we should get into it a little bit with SDI about what the numbers are surrounding lost parking revenue, and if we want to make that a part of the budget process, we still have an opportunity within the next couple of months to do that. So I think if there are not more public comments, I think we're ready to vote on the consent agenda now, yes?
Sorry, just, Council, I just want to make sure Councilwoman Hamlet and Councilwoman Miniger are okay. Like, are you feeling comfortable with this?
You look okay.
I am, yeah, thank you.
I just want to make sure.
Are you well?
No, I mean, you guys have voiced your opposition here, so I just want to make sure you're comfortable with the way that we're going with this.
So she brought up, Councilmember Hamlet did bring up a very good point, and I, but I think it's, to Ms. Toth's comment also, it's going to be addressed later for sure. This doesn't, this is, I think the, getting the parking revenue reimbursed from SDI is just a larger conversation that probably can be handled separately. So I'm okay with.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes, I just want to circle back up on that conversation at a later date.
Yep.
As long as Rita gets her money.
As long as Rita gets her money.
That's why we're all here, right? Okay, all right, everybody, okay, are we good? I think everybody in the community has had an opportunity now to comment on this, right? So I think we're ready for a vote. Should we do a roll call vote on this? Just, let's just do a roll call vote on this.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Harriston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartian?
Aye, okay. That could be a record for the consent agenda comment. All right, okay, we're now on to items for discussion, action or referral, and we have one, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Levine to introduce it, and then I think we are going to have a guest as well.
Sure. We are required by law and through our settlement agreement to have an annual report drawn up by our municipal housing, Affordable Housing Manager here about the activity from the year before. This was already presented to the Affordable Housing Committee last week, and I know the meeting was recorded, so any of you can tune in and watch it, it's available online. Also required by law is that this report must be presented to a governing body in a forum where we can discuss it in public. Hence, hence this evening, thank you, Mr. Delory, Matt Delory's here, who's the Assistant Director of DCS in Summit, and also our Affordable Housing Manager, and he can briefly summarize the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Matt.
Yes, my pleasure, Council President, thank you, Mayor Council, my fellow colleagues, the public watching from home and here in the room, much appreciated. I just wanted to confirm whether or not that is, that the annual report is on this, it may not be.
It's there, just reduce the, it should be right on the homepage or at the bottom on the toolbar.
Oh, Madam Clerk.
Just double-click on.
All right, and I'll make this a little bigger.
Just double-click on one of the pages.
Okay.
Maybe zoom.
No.
Is this a PowerPoint?
It looks like a PDF in a web browser, here we go. There we go. My apologies. So this is what the annual report looks like. I happen to do it quarterly, so at the beginning of the year, there isn't a lot of, we're doing a lot of setup. I have highlighted a few items in the report. Just real quick, as a municipal housing liaison, my job is to act as point of contact for people looking for affordable housing, the state increase of that nature, and as well to make sure that our plan, which is a legal agreement that covers the years 2015 to 2025, is managed properly, that development that occurs in the city is, the right fees are collected, the right deed restrictions are on properties, people that are qualified to get into houses that have openings are done so properly, and I'm assisted with the help of an administrative agent, Mark Leckington, who did come before council to speak, and as well Nancy Home from Serenian, which is our affordable attorney, affordable housing attorney. I just highlighted a few things in yellow here. The term affordable housing, I guess you could compare to any kind of mission where, whether you're curing cancer or feeding the hungry, in a sense, there is an effort to provide affordable housing, and there are a lot of organizations that do that. The Summit Housing Authority is one of those. The city has its own Mount Laurel litigated agreement to which municipalities in New Jersey have a constitutional obligation to meet affordable housing. The Summit Housing Authority, so there are a lot of groups that are addressing affordable housing. Summit is fortunate enough to have the Summit Civic Foundation that owns a whole host of properties. They do not count toward the city's plan because they aren't deed restricted, but we did reach out to them as an opportunity to see if they were willing to do that, and I've highlighted in the report that after careful consideration, they have decided graciously not to, some of the reason being that once you deed restrict, the enormity of the regulations, they felt as a nonprofit would be prohibitive to them being able to continue to carry out their mission, which I do respect, but again, we're trying our best to try to get units and, you know, increase our portfolio, which we're looking to do, so. The second thing I've highlighted as I just get through the plan is that there, a concept plan was produced, this is concept only, for the cul-de-sac at Ashwood Court. As many of you know, Morris Habitat, which is depicted in this area over here, was originally planned to cut through Ashwood Court. Litigation led to a win-win-win, Morris Habitat was able to build theirs, the neighbors did not get a cut-through, and the city was able to put two affordable units there. So we're now beginning the process to understand what we'll need to do in order to move forward with the construction of those. We are, we are simply in a concept mode, although later in the report, we are discussing a draft RFP. Continuing on down here, similar to the deed restriction request from the Civic Foundation, our house runs developmental disability houses within the city, and we did reach out to them to talk about whether or not, in lieu of money from our trust, they would be willing to deed restrict any one of their homes. For example, a four-bedroom home in affordable housing from the city's plan counts as four units, so a bedroom is a unit, so we are in discussion with them to figure out if that's something that we might be able to negotiate to capture units with them. Continuing down on the report, we've gotten a lot of calls about emergent housing. The city's affordable housing plan is not an emergent plan, we don't relocate people. This is about deed restricting and getting properties into our plan, but we did put a number of emergent resources on our website, and just to plug the website, cityofsummit.org/ah for affordable housing, cityofsummit.org/ah for affordable housing. So I do encourage people to check it out, there are a lot of resources, if you know somebody who's in trouble and needs immediate housing, there's some of the best. I did get a call from Vito Gallo, who complimented our website, which is like the godfather of affordable housing, telling you, you did an okay job on the page, so I, we were pleased about that, and he said those are the same sites that he actually refers people to. Just kind of working down here, market to affordable feasibility analysis, so how do you take properties that are on the market for regular price and figure out ways to use the trust fund to draw them down in a way that can become affordable? So we're doing analysis on that. As we move down to some continued highlighted items here, the final version of an Affordable Housing 101 is published, a lot of questions come out of not understanding affordable housing, so at Affordable Housing page, we have a 101, we did a presentation here in council, before council as well, and so that information, including that PowerPoint, can also be found on that webpage. And then just continuing to move along, and if I'm moving too fast, I apologize, but we're trying to get through a year of activity in five minutes. Morris Habitat is continuing to build, I happen to include some photographs in our report here. This is that view into the cul-de-sac from the Morris Habitat property, so those are those houses that live on the cul-de-sac. As we continue down, we have a picture of the foundation being dug for one of the houses. Continue down here, here's one of the houses having been erected. This is a modular, which is unique, but probably something we'll be seeing more of. Happened to go last week, and they've got it sided, and the bottom stone facade, some more of those. And these are some of the interiors, the kitchen, good portion of the kitchens are in, and the bathrooms, et cetera, so they are moving along there. That's going to, again, be two six-unit buildings for a total of 12, all affordable. Moving down here, we have, as you all recall, common council considered a resolution to quote-unquote "join a litigation" to try to encourage the governor to appoint people to COA. Council decided that litigation probably wasn't the best route, so there is a lot of effort to see how COA could be reinstituted as we get into and beyond 2025. Real quick, continuing down here, you may know that there was a, what was a 52-unit down to a 46-unit complex that the zoning board approved, that will deliver seven affordable units to the city's plan. We're getting to the bottom here, our administrative agent updated our operating manual, that's going to be published probably in the next two months, really finite detail, and by the way, you can hear the administrative agent discuss this on the subcommittee meeting. That video of the committee meeting that happened on February 13th can be watched in its entirety on the City of Summit's website, where he talks about how households are qualified- where he talks about how households are qualified, and he goes into a lot of detail about the specific procedures on how affordable housing is administered in the city. Here, we're talking about the RFP that's being drafted for a developer to come in to build those two units on Ashwood Court. And we also did explore the option of accessory structures as possible apartments for affordable housing. But there are a whole host of reasons why that isn't viable on the City of Summit. But again, as you can see, we're looking at all the ways, a very diverse program in which we might be able to deliver units to our plan. When we did that presentation and we summarized kind of where we were with our numbers, I kind of went, I did not kind of, I went ahead and added that seven-unit project. And so you can see, over the course of time, these are the units that are being added, have been added to the plan. And then, as I discussed, we have those two goals. One is a large unmet need, which started at 702, and then there are the 50-unit goal by 2025. And you can see how each of these projects, as they're added, starts to detract from those two numbers based on the agreement. And then what I had the administrative agent do, now that we're a lot more tech savvy and inviting people to call, we have our phone number published, you can sign up on the website to pre-qualify for affordable housing. And then also, once we place someone in housing, these are the three numbers that we're looking at. Phone inquiries, how many people are signing up, and how many households are we qualifying each year to get into affordable housing? And you can see, just for example, as we get into these later months, we're getting 20-plus people signing up on that webpage to pre-qualify. So we're seeing a lot more numbers, I think partly because it's a lot easier, we can just go on the web. I still do get phone calls. We appreciate, not everyone is web savvy, so we try to be very accommodating to make sure that you can call. There are a lot of ways to get help. And then I simply just took the December bank rec and just took a snapshot. This is the amount that we have in our Affordable Housing Trust, $1,500,000 plus $1,000,000. We average about $370,000 a year in development fees. Those are from commercial and residential fees that go into the trust. And then that trust fund, which is not tax dollars, is what's being used to fortify our efforts to establish affordable housing in the city. And that's, in a nutshell, what we did last year. So I thank you for having me, and if anyone has any questions that I can answer, I would be happy to do so. And if I can, I'd be happy to record them and make sure that the right person gets answers for you.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes.
Comments?
Sure, sure. I think, thank you for the presentation. I have a question. I mean, deed restricted, market rate to affordable rehabilitation, new construction. It seems like we are indeed running on all cylinders to create affordable housing to try to chip away at this unmet need. But the unmet need is, I can't tell if it's 638 or 628 by eyes, but that feels unfathomable. Is that, or that feels like so many units.
Yeah.
Can, what is, can we realistically attain that? And what is the expectation on that? And I guess my second part question, I partially know the answer to this because I think we've discussed it, but I think it's a good, a good thing for the public to hear. And also, I guess my second question is, despite that considerable unmet need, but all the wonderful work in progress that you and we have made this past year, how, in your opinion, would the court view where we are right now, our status as far as affordable housing?
So I think what most people, we talked about it in the presentation, but what most people don't realize is there were a lot of municipalities that did not meet their constitutional obligation. I can think of a few very large complexes that went up that had no units in it. And this was during the time when litigation was going on. So there is a very long period of litigation in which municipalities finally brought to court, had to start negotiating numbers. So while, yes, this is a very large number, there was a very long period of time where there wasn't a delivery of units. And so this was sort of the reconciliation of unmet past and then sort of resetting so that we can move forward. I don't believe that we are expected to have met the 628 at all, but there is an expectation that each municipality would be granted a number that they had to meet. Separate from that, the 50-unit is a goal that, I can't tell you how a court would respond. I really don't know. My hope is that COA will be reconstituted, there will be a standard entity within the state. But we're also expecting to go to court again. The easiest thing to do is to meet the 50, and then there is no explanation, we're done. If we don't meet it, I can't tell you. There are extreme cases. I do feel that Summit is doing everything in its power to meet its obligation. So I don't know that the court would act in an extreme fashion against us, but I also couldn't tell you what they would say if we don't meet the goal. Yep?
Yes?
Thank you, Council President, through you. Thank you. You've done a lot of work this year. I would highly recommend that, if you haven't watched it, the February 13th presentation is very helpful.
A-H, affordable housing.
Oh, just A-H, okay. And so, and I kind of know the answer to this, but I just wanted to ask, did I?
Backslash.
Backslash, oh, backslash, I said forward slash, sorry.
You can find it, just Google it, just Google it, you can do it.
Can you distill, just briefly, tomorrow there is a public Summit Housing Authority meeting. For people that are listening who might not understand, because I feel like I finally have kind of wrapped my head around this, can you, in a very brief way, explain the difference of the work that you're doing versus what the Summit Housing Authority is going to be working on?
Well, like I said, there's a mission, which is to create affordable housing, just like lots of nonprofits, and there are tons of people getting together to chip away at that. The Summit Housing Authority is its own standalone authority. It's not an entity of the city. It happens to be called the Summit Housing Authority. But I believe it's federal funding funneled through the state to which they carry out a series of activities to develop and maintain a large portfolio of housing within the city. What's come up at this meeting is that they have a geographic requirement, AKA they give preference, excuse me, to people that live in Summit. And because of that, that negates them, the units they have from our operation. So Summit Housing Authority, working on affordable housing issues in their own way with a source of funding, which is separate. The city, through Mount Laurel, all municipalities have a municipal obligation to provide affordable housing. So we are under a legal agreement to which we have very set activities that we have to do in order to develop and establish our own role of what units we can produce in our city. So we're doing our effort as a city based on this agreement. They have their own federal and other parameters that they use. Civic Foundation is doing it by owning houses and running their own little program. So the city's program is a litigated agreement that has very set activities that we have to perform throughout, what's called Round Three, 2015 to 2025. Does that answer your question? We're an arm of...
It's helpful for everybody else.
Yeah, oh, I agree. This is a great, yes, because it is very complicated, the law, the percentage of salaries, the way in which, I think when you hear Mark, to your point, talk on the video, you can start to hear the regulations that exist and what has to happen in order to qualify someone, et cetera.
Yeah. And final, a final comment. I just wanted to say, in terms of 2025, no one can know, but I think when I've heard, when we're chipping away at these numbers, I think there's some significant work that you've done. So when you get in front of a judge, I'm really confident with the work that the city has done. And in 2025, I want to go to Councilwoman Hairston, because some time ago, you asked, "What's the state doing?" And so Assemblywoman Munoz has introduced, has sponsored, not introduced, but sponsored legislation, several bills trying to address this. So I'm hopeful that COA will be reinstituted in 2025, and it will be an election year. So there will hopefully be some accountability.
That'd be great. And in the meantime, we're doing everything we can, to your point. And we will either show up in a court or be before COA, and we'll proceed. Thank you.
Yes?
I just get in awe every time you stand up and talk about this. Yes, I'm talking to you. We are so fortunate to have your amazing grasp of this very complicated national crises that is just getting worse and worse. And I know it's cyclical, and I know it's at the federal level, it's at the state level. Finally, the county has begun providing some relief. And what I'm most grateful for, your work as well as Mark's, you really do talk about it from the availability side and how you have really rationalized what has been an irrational problem to deal with and on the supply side. And what we don't talk about is the demand side and how it is getting worse. And I appreciated in that meeting, and I really do encourage people who care about this issue to tune in, because we did talk about the demand. And we have a list that has 1,300 people on the list, if I'm saying that correctly, and we had to close that list.
This is the Summit Housing Authority, correct? I understand that to be true, yep.
And who is not on that list are families who are affected by job loss and the skyrocketing amounts for rents and are young people who want to buy homes and cannot afford to live here. So what you have done with providing resources in one place and making it available for people to, not only if you won't want to live, if you can't afford to be in Summit, how you can reach out to other resources is a prize. And I hope Mayor will have an opportunity in some way to get recognition at the League of Municipalities for the work that our town has done to be of service to people who are in need. We've absolutely done our legal responsibility on the supply side, but recognizing this is, there is a demand that has been getting worse. Summit has, under your leadership, Matt, has just done a yeoman's job. And I just want to thank you and think it's worth of recognition.
I do appreciate that. I know a fraction of what 90% of the people in this business know, so every day I show up and there's more, but I do appreciate that, so thank you. There was a time where I only had 500 bucks in my pocket, so I do know what it's like to be worried. At the same time, I'm stable now, but at the same time, I also want to make sure that the city itself shows up in court and can be proud. So I appreciate your words. Thank you very much.
Council President? Yes, sir. So Matt, I was just going to point out one thing in your report that was really useful.
Is it typo?
No.
Oh, okay.
It was a really useful tool, and it was the Housing Solutions Matchmaker Tool.
I'm sorry, yes.
Not your creation, I know, but something that you heard about at that conference. That really puts, and this is just a comment, it's not a question.
Yes.
I think to somebody that doesn't fully understand this, it really puts into context what you're dealing with. And it kind of puts a little bit of geographic context as well. So you can zero in on Union County. You can see the, what we're seeing in this area when it comes to ratio, income to rent ratios, and how that plays into what we're seeing in terms of these large numbers.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks for providing that.
Yep.
Thank you. Other members of council? Nope?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt.
It's been my pleasure. I appreciate it, yep.
Okay. Members of the community, comments, questions on this? Yeah. Matt, can we have you hang out by a table or?
Yeah, I'm hovering.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire Toth, again. I have a question and an observation. My question is, there's, I think, 12 townhouses at 57 New England? So if my math is right, there should be a set-aside, and I don't recall having seen that, at least in November. I went back and looked.
Yeah.
But I wanted to be sure that there, that we're getting set-asides for those.
Yes, I can explain that. If you're on, I'm going to dive in on the microphone, just so people at home can hear me as well. I believe you are referring to, and 59 New England.
Yeah.
Okay, so at 59 New England, they owed two units. In this case, which we do, they do not do anymore, is they did an off-site one at 412 Morris, Unit 12, and a payment in lieu of taxes of $110,000, which is how they satisfied their unit obligation. That no longer exists, that that sort of predated me, but you can't do that any, we don't do that anymore. You do, and council has been adamant about, when you build, it is onsite. You have to provide your units onsite. So for example, the 46 units at Morrison River, those seven units will be located actually at the site. So that's the answer to that question. And again, for the public, the multifamily set-aside ordinance, which was part of the agreement, requires at any time five or more units are built within the city, that they owe a percentage of units. And the residential kicks in when you're building new, but you are not creating units, you owe a fee. And that's how the fee and the units are delivered to the city through ordinance per our legal agreement.
And that leads exactly into my observation, I'm sorry, Jay just left. Because the obligation kicks in when a developer puts up five or more units on a piece of property. If a developer does a project across contiguous lots that are not the same lot, so that the total is more than five, but each lot has one or two units in it, my understanding is that the set-aside does not kick in. An example of this is Orchard and Park, where there's a number of duplexes that were put up on contiguous lots, but because each lot had fewer than five units, there was no set-aside requirement. And I would recommend to planning board and to the council that they might look at amending the DRO in this regard so that, under those specific circumstances, there would be an additional set-aside requirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Okay. Thank you, Claire. Other comments, members of the community on this? All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, council members.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, we are going to close out that discussion item at this time. Again, the report that Matt was talking about is on the city's Affordable Housing website, as well as the meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee that was held last Monday. Okay, we are now on to the public comments section of the meeting, and this is the point where we'll take comments on anything that is not on the business agenda of this meeting. So we are ready to go. Come on up.
Good evening, council.
And if you could just say your name and where you live, please, thank you.
I just started with "good evening."
Hi, thank you.
My name is Kevin Brown, and thank you for the opportunity to testify tonight. I'm a member of the Beauvoir Avenue Cooperative, the Beauvoir Avenue Corporation. And I am joined here by my wife of 31 years' floor and fellow resident Sarah Strumeyer. We are a seven-unit historic co-op, originally built in 1880 and established as a co-op in 1972, so over 50 years old. Recently, our Board Treasurer, Ryan Minkin, sent correspondence to the city, which was referred to the city parking director, I think her name is Rita McNanny, requesting that the meter parking on Beauvoir Avenue be altered to resident parking. The reason is, is that our co-op has no resident parking. That request was denied. We feel that this request should be accepted for the following reasons. First, there, it's not just our co-op, but there are also family homes and complexes on the same street who have the need for street parking as well. Second, three of our 14 residents are 80 years or more old, and they cannot walk long distances. One of our residents also is differently abled. Third, meters were placed there to avoid hospital employees from overlook, from parking there. That's no longer an issue. The hospital's built another garage, as you know, and so employees can park at that new garage. Four, many people are, other people are using the parking now, some from out of state. Many are visitors to the hospital who simply refuse to pay the few dollars that you're supposed to pay to park in that garage. And they really should park there and not in the residential neighborhood. Others are commuters, who should be using the commuter lots and not parking and then running to the train. Five, the middle school lot is simply not a good option for us. You have to pay both day parking and night parking. Some of us commute using the public transportation, and so you have, your car is there and you can't leave it there, and so you've got to pay can't leave it there, and so you got to pay for day parking as well, even though you're not commuting because you live right by the train. Also at night, the middle school lot, which is the closest to our co-op, it's not very well lit, and many of our residents feel scared at night because it's very dark on the corner there. There may be some concerns that there would be lost revenue if this was turned to resident parking, but we would pay for the application for the resident parking permits. Six, there are, I believe, eight other townhouse complexes in Summit which do have resident parking, and so why shouldn't we get resident parking? And seven, the town parking director stated that the resident could not be granted because it would be an obstruction to the ambulances going to the hospital, and that's simply not accurate. We are not asking to add residential parking on both sides of the street, but only on the existing side of the street where there is already metered parking. And there are plenty of lanes on Beauvoir Avenue, so there's no issue that the ambulances can't get by at any time. So again, thank you for this opportunity. We would please consider this request seriously. Believe this is both the safe, secure, and best option for the Beauvoir Avenue residents and for the residents of our beloved city of Summit. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll refer this back to the Community Programs Parking Services Committee to discuss there. And if you can make sure that we get your emails, we can follow up with you that way.
How do we provide our emails?
Greg, may I, can I jump in?
Sure.
Sir, just so you know, I actually spoke with Rita McNanny this morning about you specifically. She's not here tonight, she wasn't feeling well, but I know it's something that she has been speaking with, I believe it was one of the chiefs, I'm not sure which one, had mentioned the hospital. But I know that that was a concern of Rita's, and we'll certainly have her follow up. I'm happy to come over sometime this week or next week to look at it as well. But I know it's certainly on Rita's mind, and we discussed it, in fact, this morning.
Thank you, I appreciate that, councilwoman. Is there a way that we can provide our email addresses?
Sure, absolutely. We can, I think Rita might have them, but you can take them down, for sure.
We've mainly corresponded with Ryan Minkin.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. We're open for public comments. Not on the agenda.
I live at 45 Wallace Road with my wife Fran. Except for college, law school, and the Marine Corps, I've lived in Summit. And I'm known as a local. I want to shout out here to the city clerk. I thought you were 32 years old!
She started working here when she was three.
I remember when she started working here, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about Maple Street. I heard the summary at the beginning, and one thing that I've done on this myself, one little issue, is check the master plan. The master plan was approved in 2000. It's been reviewed several times. Last time was in 2016, and there are, there's a lot of pages, a lot of pages to review. And I tried to review them all. And there are four things that apply to this application to close Maple Street for any period of time over 48 hours. And they are, and they've been consistently reviewed and approved each time. So for 23 years, we've had these four circulation objectives relating to traffic. Number one, to encourage the location and design of transportation and circulation routes which will promote the free flow of traffic. The closure of Maple Street does not check that box. If anything, it violates that box. I have the pleasure for years of working downtown and owning a building on Beechwood Road. When the, when there's, during the pandemic, I think everybody felt that was a good idea. But we did get the feel, and the feel is gridlock, gridlock. When they're serving on this side of Maple Street. Number two, to channel through traffic to major streets. Maple Street is one of two ways to access our downtown. It's a major street, and has been for over 100 years. That box is not checked by closing Maple Street for any period of time over 48 hours. Three, provide adequate parking and adequate loading and unloading facilities on both sides of Maple that are proposed to be closed. There are trucks all the time near there, and when you had the pedestrian mall, the answer was, use your neighbor's area. That's not fair. It's not fair to the neighbor to have to have their truck parked there and deliver because it's closed. That's the third box that has not been checked favorably. Four, to relieve traffic congestion in the CRBD. Maple Street is in the CRBD. In no way could that help relieve traffic. It's caused a major problem for people. And anybody's listening out there tonight, whether you eat at Fiorino's or not, and you come to town from the other side, from CVS side, excuse me, it's a joke. And people are used to going right straight through, and not just schoolchildren getting, there are people who commute, they get to the station that way, and they have to go a different way. On the other side, it's the same thing. The traffic on Union Place is gridlock. I am amused at the way we've treated that. You, the council and the parking director, I talked to her about it. It used to be 90 minutes on most parking spaces on Union Place. With this outdoor parking, eating on Union Place, on Maple Street, on the Union Place side, first it was 90 minutes, then there were 25 minutes. Now it's 15 minutes for many of the spots to park. I challenge you to get a coffee at Dunkin' Donuts in the morning when there's, that's closed, and do, and get, and get back, and get something there and get back to your car in 15 minutes. The next step will be what, five minutes? That box is not checked. You have four boxes available from the master plan, and none of them are marked, marked favorable. They're all marked unfavorable. I think if the master plan means anything after 23 years of existence, this is a nonstarter, period. It's a waste of time. This is a road for vehicles, not, it's not a floor of a restaurant. It was great during the pandemic, it's over, we know that. I think this is a nonstarter. It may even be, if you're going to give any credence to the master plan, this is your master plan, our master plan. It fails. It fails. And it's time to call a spade a spade. It's a nonstarter.
Thank you.
I'm not done.
We've got about.
All right, I'm done.
We've got to about six minutes or so so far. So if we can move on to the next person, thank you.
Greg, may I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Orman, for coming tonight and semper Fi. I didn't realize you were Marine Corps. You know, I, this is something that I spoke with Council President Vartan, actually, just a few days ago, and it truly is a concern of mine. I truly, I truly am concerned that, you know, one of my questions was, how do we police, who polices the master plan? And I'm truly just trying to learn and educate myself with all of you, because I think it's a really important discussion, and I think we should have it publicly, because I truly don't know who polices the master plan. And when something this serious comes up, I think it deserves a serious discussion. As you mentioned, it's a major road, and we really have to take our time with this because it's simply not what the road was meant for. And I would urge all of us to potentially have some conversation around that. I think it's very, very important, and I think the public should hear that dialogue.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you. Come on up, Bruce.
It's Bruce Thirckoff, Maple Street, 26 Maple Street. Just as a little follow-up, I know you were talking before, Jamie, on compromises, and we thought this is a compromise between three months and four months. To follow up on what Gil said, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Before you start planning all of these compromises and closing the street for how long, and you're spending a lot of time on this, don't you think you ought to have all those check marks on all the approvals and permits that you have to get from the state, from the fire department, from the police department, from the emergency services? The, you have to have traffic studies, independent traffic studies of town. And, you know, just to go forward, the pandemic emergency is over. I mean, if you're going to do something now, you better make sure that you can do it before you go forward. I know we had a meeting with the landlords, with Jamie, and, you know, just like you mentioned when you began this meeting, that this is not part of the, it's, nothing's been determined, and that we don't know if there is going to be a closure or isn't. But Jamie starts off about some of the things that are already compromises. Well, I don't know who's compromising. You know, I mean, have we had a formal discussion with the town as far as compromises are concerned? What all the people in town want or do not want? I don't think it's happened. You know, I mean, I think you have to be very careful in going forward with something that you don't know if you can do right now. And I just ask that maybe the council, the attorney for the town, make sure that all of these things that you need can be gotten, because otherwise it's just a pure waste of time. And one other comment on, you were talking about the budget being, you're looking for $2 million. You're short.
Not looking for $2 million.
Well, whatever. You know, I don't know if you guys, if you guys, if you guys read the patch, and maybe read the patch concerning some neighboring towns. But I read an article just this week or last week where they were talking about the school budget in Chatham. And they're 10% light on what the funds they need, and they, the way I read it, and I could be wrong, that the development that they're putting up on River Road, 259 units, and if you ever want to take a look at something that's been overbuilt, take a ride down there before you determine anything on West Broad Street. That they have a pilot program, like you're supposed to have a pilot program on the development on West Broad Street. I got the impression that part of the shortage is from maybe not getting conventional tax revenues instead of getting much less on a pilot program. So, I mean, I'm not fully versed on it, but maybe it should be looked into because we might be having the same problem. I don't know. You build 259 units, I don't know how many you're going to build in Summit now, but is that going to increase the budget? Because you have to have, you know, certain, whatever it is, levels of, or student teachers or whatever, teachers in school or whatever, you know, whatever facilities you have to provide for the additional units. So I only throw that in there where I think it should be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. So just to, I think, reiterate what Jamie was talking about before, there are five elements of Broad Street, Maple Street, that we're looking at here, right? First is the timeline, second is the safety piece, third is the legal pathway, fourth is the fee structure, and fifth is to make it look pretty. Right? So, so, hang on. So what we're doing, right, is on the timeline, we just have to come up with what that is, right? And then we have to decide, and we have to talk with the community about that. On the legal piece, I tend to agree with Jamie, and I think other people have spoken similarly up here too, that a pedestrian mall is not the path to go down here for this. It's the other way, it's the other way, the pedestrian mall model, which is a legal pathway. The other pathway is the 48-hour, longer than 48-hour closure, but shorter than permanent, right? And I think that makes sense. The safety piece is that we've got memos coming from the police chief and the fire chief, and I think if they want to speak to that for a minute, in a second, that would be great, just because I think there's been a lot of talk in the community about, well, is this even safe? We wouldn't even be going forward with this conversation if the chief said, hey, look, this is a really bad idea, right? So I think we should hear from them in a second. And then, of course, we have council members and staff working on the fee structure, and then we also have council members and staff working on, how do we get these orange barriers out of here and make it look prettier? So we are, we are going to, before we vote on anything, have all of those things squared away, and we'll come back and we'll present it all together, and we'll talk about it, and we'll have the opportunity for county, community members to continue to comment about it. So can I ask to just, to Chief Evers and to Chief Segorsky, for just, just a very quick minute, to just summarize your thoughts that you have put into writing to some of us about, about the closure of Maple Street? Yeah, sure, please.
I do have a prepared memo that I will respond to safety with this week. I did have an email that I put out, my position, basically on the fire departments end, road closures are us or nothing new. We deal with them every day around Summit, either be permanent, temporary road closure, paving, so we do, we do that. Part of our responsibility at the fire department is to adapt and adjust to what other situations given to us. So in this instance, with Maple Street, it is a small section of Maple Street, it really doesn't have any major daily operational impact on the fire department. We deploy our resources there, we either go on Union Place side of it or Springfield Avenue side of it, and we'll get out and do investigations, and nine times out of 10, it's on investigation purposes. But we do, we do pre-plan it, this is a pre-planned event, closing Maple Street. In that case, we go out, we look at the situation, we assess hazards in that area, and we come with a response route that's best for us and best for the public, and we adjust accordingly. So as far as the daily operations go, there's not many major impact on operations, they're just a small area of Maple Street, we're able to access from both sides of that closure. As far as any foreseeable down the future, if we had to do any kind of major incident there, any kind of rescue, the only big impact would be getting apparatus in there, a ladder truck. We'd have to take a little bit of time and move barricades, move chairs, things of that nature out of the way. They're very outlier situations, but, you know, like I say, my position is that we adjust to what's in front of us. We have houses in town that are a lot further off uptown than we do every day, we have to have different pre-planned for those. So as far as the fire department is concerned, it just is the normal, dealing with obstacles in town, around town, road closures, temporary, things of that nature. So, you know, we don't really have a position either way, but we just deal with it accordingly. We do, like we do with any good incident in Summit, we adjust and respond, you know, as best we can in situations. And I'm confident that anything uptown in that area, our guys, our response protocols can very quickly assess the situation and respond, and with very little amount of impact on our responses to that area, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Chief Z, can I, can I ask you to just give one minute? Chief Z, can I, can I ask you to just give one minute also? Yeah, 20 seconds, he's fine.
I gave you the memo detailing.
Yep, yep.
Pretty much the police perspective on this is the impact that the street, Maple Street closure would have on our ability to respond to emergencies within the closed area and our ability to respond to other emergencies in town by any obstacles that may be created by the street closure. And in short, our ability to respond into the enclosed area is not a problem for us. It just cause maybe a minimal inconvenience. It's a similar response that we use when we respond to apartment complexes, business complexes, large open areas. We just have, we'd have to park outside the the barricade and walk in. And in looking at that, it would only add maybe between 15 and 30 seconds onto a response time within the barricades. Regarding our response times to calls because of the closed streets, dealing with any kind of traffic or congestion that may be caused by that. Again, I go into detail in the memo, but in in short here, it would have a a minimal impact. But again, like like the fire chief said, we are used to, you know, playing the hand that we're dealt. We, you know, improvise and come up with, you know, alternate plans and alternate routes. You know, so I I think I ended the memo saying that it just has a minimal effect, and it shouldn't be a problem for our response times.
Thank you very much. So I'll. Thank you very much. So, yes.
I have a question for the chief.
Sure.
Chief, you also mentioned in your memo that you have a quadrant system on.
Well, yeah, I didn't go into great detail here, but.
Right, but you're not going through Maple Street to get from one side of town to another.
The police department, we have our, the city broken down into four sections of patrol sectors. And based on the geographical boundaries of those patrol sectors, it limits the amount of incidents where we would be traveling through Maple Street, you know, at any given time to respond to an emergency, even if it was open. The only time that we would have to deal with it is in one of the areas, the smallest area, area four, which covers our central business district. The other areas, the other three areas, one, two, and three, they they border, all three border on the north and the south around Maple Street. So the only times that those cars would be coming through is to cross over into another area to respond to a call if that was needed. But for the most part, they they respond to calls within their, within their areas. It wouldn't be a problem.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Do we have other comments from members of the community? I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to comment. Yes. Maybe we can connect via email with you guys after. I want to make sure we get through the comments this evening.
Hi, Jamel Boyer, 204 Morris Avenue. You know, I've been hearing a lot about how we respond, and I wanted to know what proactive steps are we taking in terms of threat assessment? You know, we live in a world where we have, you know, these risks that, you know, just happen. You know, recently, we have, you know, people that have shootings. Several years ago in New York City, there was a car that, you know, drove in an area where people were running. You know, these are, you know, uncertain risks, but I wanted to know what proactive steps are we taking? You know, my line of work, you know, we we look at preventative measures, trying to find out patterns and things that people are, may do, right? You know, suspicious behavior, different things, maybe surveillance. So, you know, I'd rather, I'd like to hear possibly what proactive things, because I'd rather prevent something possibly as opposed to responding to it. So when we have an area where there are a group of people that are going to be communing, we want to make sure that someone is not going to have a bad day and just able to just drive their car through the middle of town, right? And that may, you know, a preventative measure would probably just be to put up some kind of barricades. And I'm not sure if the, those orange ones will stop a moving vehicle. And, you know, if it happens once, I think that's enough, right? So I just wanted to hear some of your responses about proactive monitoring. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, typically during council meetings, we really don't get into specific police operations. But I'll ask the mayor if you want to add to that, or the chief if you want to add to that, and then we can, we can connect.
I was just going to say, and Chief can follow me. Our police department is constantly taking proactive measures and going through threat assessments and doing lots of training with our officers, training at schools, teaching the children and the teachers. But I am not going to discuss publicly what our police officers are doing and discuss publicly the threat assessments that we go through. But I just want to assure you, it's very important, and it's focused on every day.
Understand. You know, the New Jersey Transit has a saying, I think it's, you know, if you see something, say something.
That started after 9/11 in New York City, yes.
Exactly, my point, right? So so I think it's important to, you know, kind of tell the community what kind of, you know, I mean, you have to go into granular detail, you know, about the, you know, the steps you are taking. But to assure the community that you are monitoring social media, that you are looking for threats, that there's a police presence, maybe not in uniform, but there are police that are out there in the community where people gather and eat if you're going to open a place with the public.
There are.
That's all.
There are.
Okay.
Yes, please be assured.
Just wanted to hear.
It's something we focus on very, very seriously. Do you have anything you want to add, Chief? Okay.
Okay. Other, other comments?
Hello, Erwin Miller, 5 Knob Hill Drive. First of all, just want to pick up on that. I have concerns around water infrastructure, clean water infrastructure in our city. I've been following your, trying to follow as much as I can. So I do have, I mean, I've got a lot of questions, so I'm not going to ask all of them here. I'll probably put up an email around a lot of different topics. But one of them will be around, how are we doing regular testing? And how are we ensuring, you know, daily, weekly, that there's been no issues in our town? So I'm sure you don't have an answer for that like today, but I'll follow up with you on that. My question actually is around, I think, two meetings ago, there was a parking camera presentation or something. What's going on with that? I have a lot of questions and thoughts around that, but I'm wondering when the best time is to discuss that.
I think if we have a, just, do you want to do a quick update on where we are?
Sure. Good to see you, Mr. Miller. I am in charge of the Parking Services Committee, so I work directly with Rita McNanny. And I'm not sure if you watched the whole safety stick presentation. I'm assuming that's what you're talking about. One of the things that we're trying to eliminate downtown is the amount of people that are double parking and, you know, idling in front of, in front of stores. And we really didn't have a great, we weren't super successful at always capturing or ticketing those instances. So Director McNanny, I believe, I forget how she found the safety stick, but she did some research and determined that she would like to look further into it. She's still doing her due diligence on that, and she should be reporting back probably, I think I spoke to her this morning, probably in about two or three weeks. But we're happy to sit down with you and answer any questions. I can try to answer some of them now, but if I can, I can get back to you.
There's a lot, and probably some of them are probably technical as well, so.
So if you guys want to have an email, let me know.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I can call you tomorrow or weekend.
Sure, whatever you think, but I should talk to you about that.
Absolutely.
And then, or can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I also, just also, I, you mentioned this last week or two weeks ago. Just reminder that there are a lot of people watching virtually, so I just want to shout out whoever's doing the new camera angles. I don't know if anyone saw that. There's new camera angles coming in, so that's.
Are there?
I don't know who's working on.
Well, we're never at home watching, so.
Well, some of us are, and so kudos to whoever's doing the camera work on the videos.
Is it Amanda today?
Tonight and her associate.
Nice work, Amanda.
So I'm just going to reflect back again, because a lot of us are watching virtually. First meeting after the new year, Mayor Raddist, some of the comments you made about the temperature in the room last year. I know that there's a lot of talk around closures and Broad Street West and everything like that. But one thing that's sort of not talked about anymore is COVID policies with regard, and I know, at least for my part, I certainly played a role in some of the temperature being increased last year. You know, I'm not going to apologize for that. I don't think I should. I don't think the parents of Summit or any of these towns should. And I just want to remind folks that I, if people are aware and watching and know and remember what happened, and I hope that our political leadership doesn't try to bring any of those forced measures back on families and children. So, because the temperature will come back up, and I want to keep it down. I know that we will keep it down, but just as a reminder, because no one's talking about it anymore, we kind of want to shove it under the rug. And I get that, but, you know, we're still very aware of what happened and the mistakes that were made. And we see every day the studies that come out that keep on proving our side, let's say, right? So I just want to flag that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kevin McGoy, Woodland Avenue. I really didn't want to get involved with this Maple Street thing. I just see a lot of parallels of Maple Street with Broad Street. And that may sound ridiculous, but it's not. I think Broad Street was really the product of a flawed process or lack of process, lack of informed decision making. Decisions that were made without people really understanding what they were doing or why they were making decisions or without complete information. And then, then those decisions were stuck with, and all of the effort was on pushing forward that decision. And I honestly, I didn't think much of Maple Street when it was brought up. And, you know, somebody was like, oh, are you against closing? It's not. I like the outdoor dining. But when I look at it now, and it really started to change when I heard business owners on Maple Street actually complain that it was hurting their business and their residents on Maple Street who complain about it. And you see, there's building owners that come in here and complain about it. And I can tell you personally, I use Maple Street all of the time, right? So for me, does it benefit having Maple Street closed? I don't think it does. It, what's my benefit of eating outside in the summer at Summit House versus eating inside? So when you really step back and look at it, have you guys really done the work to understand what the actual benefit to the community is? Or is it like an anecdotal, it's great for the community? I hear that it's great for business in the community. It's certainly great for four business owners, for restaurant owners, which also happen to be the four most expensive restaurants in Summit, which I don't know what percentage of Summit's population can even afford to go there, certainly on a regular basis. So there's a lot of people in the community like Broad Street West who make either a knee jerk, you know, if you say, do you like outdoor dining? Did you, did you think it was nice? And they'll say, yeah, I thought that was great. But they don't think about it holistically. That's your job, you know? And it kind of disappointed me, and I feel bad because, you know, for the fire chief to come up and talk about, we're used to obstacles. We're used to getting around. If streets get closed here or whatever. I don't think any, I don't think either one of them would tell you that it improves safety to have that closed. There's no traffic study presented to them to show the flow of traffic. And once you're not, once Broad Street's closed at any point in time, how that affects the flow of traffic on the other streets. I live on that side of town, and I could tell you, I don't know, to get to Hawthorne, it has to get impacted. It has to get impacted if you close Broad Street, if the EMS people need to get there. I understand the police are kind of circling around in quadrants, so they may not have to use that. But I think for, you know, emergency responses, it is, and you're, you're a doctor, Jamie, and Greg, you were on the Summit EMS. And I'm sure neither one of you would sit here and tell me that, you know, a minute or two may not mean the difference between life, life and death. So when I hear that there's this big community benefit, it's very easy to identify what the costs are to the community. And it's the community as a whole. And I I don't really understand, is there any empirical evidence that, any study that's been done to show how much this benefits the business in Summit? And when you talk about that it benefits the community, how? You know, oh, people like it. The same people who say they like it also complain about congestion. You know, they're not thinking about everything. That's your job. And your job is to represent everybody in Summit, not to represent four business owners and the people in Summit that are fortunate enough to be able to eat out at these restaurants that are very expensive. So somebody who can't afford or somebody who doesn't, doesn't, you know, go to these restaurants, how are they benefiting from this? Because it's not community space. You're giving a public piece of infrastructure, a public roadway, essentially to four private business owners. That's what you're doing. And I think if you polled people and took a poll and said, are you for giving public roadways, critical public roadway? This one's identified in the flow and everything else, for the benefit, primary benefit, it's indisputable, the primary benefit of four private enterprises? I think people would say no, and that's what you're doing. And there hasn't been work done. There hasn't been work done on studies and flows of it. There hasn't been work done on response times. There hasn't been any of it, but I don't even know that you need to. When you look at the laws, and I asked you, Greg, to share with me the laws that govern this, and you didn't respond. Jamie, you did. Thank you. And I looked at them. It's not easy, nor should it be, to close a public roadway. It's a vital piece of infrastructure. So again, how are we benefiting from this? I don't think unless you do some sort of legal contortion act that you can abide by the regulations under it. One of them is it has to benefit, it has to be, has to benefit safety and improve traffic in the surrounding roadways. That, that's a requirement. Like, I don't know how you can do it. You're going to have to ask Aaron Schreger to represent that and put his seal of approval on it, which I don't know how you can do it. I mean, I guess if you do that and give it to DOT, they'll say, okay, well, he did the work. But you're really going to be asking him or somebody else to do that. And for what? Like, can you honestly tell me what is the public benefit? Can anybody tell me what the public benefit is? And and again, how do you, how, just from a fairness perspective? When you have the business owners on there, and I don't know how many of you have talked to the other business owners, but when they're telling you this hurt my business, whether it's a tailor or a robot place, or when they're telling you this hurts my business, when you close this street, this hurts my business, like, how, how do you pick a winner and loser in this? It certainly doesn't hurt the restaurants when the streets opened, right? So it's just purely providing a benefit to four enterprise, four business owners at the expense of other people on that street, never mind everybody else. So I don't even know why we're talking about this. This, this came at a time, and it was great. You could have closed half of 24 and 2/3 of 78 during COVID, and it wouldn't have had any impact on anything. So nobody was going on that street during COVID. You had these four, five restaurants, one of them's owned by the same person, that's why I keep doing the four and five, who they had all their indoor space, no outdoor space. They had successful businesses beforehand and after with no outdoor space. The problem was they legally were not allowed to use their indoor space. Well, residents and people in this community weren't allowed to go inside and sit and eat. So it made, it was a win-win-win. You saved businesses, you gave them outdoor space that they didn't have. Nobody was using the roadway. It was obviously in the best interest of everybody. That's all done. They can use all their indoor space. They're crushing it. They're not going out of business. They don't need this. This is a pure benefit to them. And like I said, you have other businesses and people who own property. They're up here telling you, like, don't do this, don't do this. And I just see this momentum going where it's, you know, you can't be doing nothing. If you're talking about June or, how are you going to get this to the DOT without doing stuff behind the scenes? I, I, I don't know. It's just they're telling you, I've seen this before. So either there's no work going on behind the scenes, which is a problem, because there's not enough time to do this, or there's work going on behind the scenes, and, you know, we're not hearing about it. And then, again, another parallel is you had, obviously, somebody told the restaurants to have people. to have people come out at the last meeting. So you had a parade of people coming out at the last meeting. And most of them were ironically situated by where one of the business owners lives. One of them talked about, it takes me two or three minutes extra to do, he doesn't use Maple Street, he doesn't live on our side of town. And I don't know, and then everybody started repeating this, two or three minutes. There's no study for two or three minutes.
Kevin, can I ask you, can I wrap up? We're at about six.
Yeah. So if, if you could just simply tell me, like, what studies have been done on the safety, legitimately? I, I don't know how, neither one of them is going to sit here and tell you that it's better for them, it's an obstacle.
We understand what you're asking for.
And just, can you, can you give me the actual empirical, like, benefits, not something anecdotal, benefits to the community?
Thank you. I understand what you're asking for. I think when we're ready, if we're going to be moving forward with something, we will have more information. Thank you, Kevin, really, thank you. I understand what you're asking for.
You're spending a lot of time on something that you probably shouldn't be, because if you just, if you do the work upfront, this is the thing, if you do the work upfront, it's very, nobody's going to refute anything you do, because you're going to have.
Thank you, thank you. So nobody's representing that there's not work happening. As a matter of fact, right at the beginning of the meeting, Jamie outlined what work is happening right now. And I think if other council members want to now say what they're thinking or what they're working on, I think that's fine. We could start over here.
Yeah, well, thanks, Kevin. It's interesting being on this side and listening to you speak. One of the things that I've been frustrated with, and my job as an elected official is to truly educate all of you on, on the process. And initially, I was very frustrated that this decision on Maple Street or the decision to go forward with, at least exploring Maple Street, did not start in law and labor. In fact, Michael, our city administrator is probably sick of hearing me. And the reason why I think it's so important that it starts in law and labor, and Councilwoman Levine, thank you very much for your update today, but the reason it's so important that it starts with law and labor is because you really have to do a true analysis. We can't just fudge this. We can't say, well, it, it might be legal. It might be legal to close a road for 48 hours if you're doing construction, but is this the right thing to do? I have been calling business owners every day, and I will tell you, hands down, the majority of the business owners on Maple Street, this is impacting their business. And when I ask some of my colleagues, I say, listen, this is really impacting some of the businesses. And they say, well, why? Is it because of parking? Is it because they're, they're going around? At the end of the day, it doesn't matter. If it's affecting their bottom line, we have to take that seriously. This is the way people make a living. And I really think we're putting our fire chief and our police chief in a bad position by even asking this. The truth is, there haven't been any studies that have been done. We haven't done the work in the last year. We haven't done the work. So now we're putting Mr. Schreger in a bad position, we're putting the chiefs in a bad position, I'm talking to the lawyers about, about potential businesses that are unhappy. So I think you make some great points, Kevin. I don't really know why we're talking about this. And I think it's worth some discussion.
May I, Council President?
Yes.
So we would be putting our, our elect, our chiefs and Aaron in a bad position if we were to be making a decision right now, and if we were not to have just laid out a very, very precise process, and we've done this multiple times. Mr. McGoey, I know that you are very concerned about process as well. You're concerned about the safety, you're concerned about the financial standpoint, if we're going to be charging, the financial benefit, that was very clear. That's all part of the process, which is absolutely happening. I'm going to ask, I'm not, not allowed if I'm not allowed to do this, but may I ask you to repeat the process of evaluating Maple Street again? I don't think that many people in this audience heard it, and for sure you did not, Mr. McGoey. Sorry. Could you, would you mind?
Well, yeah, so, I mean, I think what we're talking about here, right, is five things that we need to get figured out before we move forward with anything. One is the timeline. We have to figure out what a seasonal closure means. The second thing is the safety piece, and we're going to get in writing the memos that the safety, that the chiefs have been talking about, about their response times, right? The third piece is the legal pathway, and I think we have talked about that before. And then the fourth is the fee structure, which you're working on. The fifth is making it look nicer. So wrapped up in all of that, of course, is that we're receiving constantly feedback from people, and we're incorporating those things in, in our conversations that we're having. We can't possibly represent that we're not having conversations with each other, because of course we are. So, yeah, we're, we're, I think, I think we're, what we would typically do in this kind of thing, right, is, and in years past, I understand how this may have been frustrating, you know, it, for many years past, the whole time I've been on council. It's like, when something's not on the agenda, it seems like it's in a black hole, right? And it's like, the community has no idea what we're talking about and no sense of where we are. And what I've, what I've tried to do is, is provide an update on the things that we are considering. We're not telling you, we're there yet, we're telling you, these are the things that we are considering. So I want to, I want to make sure there's, if there's more council members that want to speak, I think we can do that.
Oh, yes, there is a council member.
Well, Kevin, Kevin, I'm going to go to Councilmember Hairston, okay?
Thank you, Council President. Through you, I can say that I do see repetition of Broad Street West happening here, where people get to think if they stand up and say the same thing over and over again, that it will be true that only four businesses are benefiting. And so if we continue to say that, that gets buried into people's heads, and they think that's what's happening, and that there is not work being done to represent the businesses and the representatives and who are, and the residents who are in the community and are affected and are entitled and welcomed to come out and express their opinion. And so it behooves us to continue to negate the misinformation that will say only four businesses are being impacted. That is not true, and we welcome residents to come out and say what they're thinking about it. It's not anything that is manufactured, it's what is democracy. And so I agree with Council Minigar. It is very important for us to repeat what Councilwoman Levine shared at the beginning, which Councilmember Hamlet has been learning the process and how, when you say it shouldn't be discussed, it is being discussed, and it is following a format that is in keeping with our experts, our experts being allowed to do their work and help inform multiple decisions being happening. So we will not, I appreciate Council President giving us the opportunity to not allow nonsense in social media to be repeated and repeated that are not true. So I thank you for that opportunity, and I hope you will permit Councilmember Levine to repeat what is happening on several levels.
Sure, thank you. Do you want to?
Hi, Kevin, how are you? Actually, I don't know if you were here in the beginning when I spoke.
No, I, I couldn't get in.
I won't go through everything, but actually, we said.
Kevin, can I have, can I have you sit down, and then Jamie will, will.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say one thing, like, I didn't hear it, so when I hear those five points, the, the plan?
Yeah.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. You start with already having made the decision that we're going to close it. It's just for how long? Number one should have been, is this right for the community? And that's already been decided, and that's my problem.
What we've, what we've discussed here.
I'm just talking, speaking to your five points.
Yes, thank you.
The timeline.
Thank you, yeah. So what we've discussed here before is that what we've heard from members of the community, both formally and informally, in overwhelming numbers, is people are in favor of some form of seasonal closure. So what we are exploring is that option. What are our options, and what things do we need to have in place if we would do it? So I'll go back to you, Councilmember.
I'll just be very brief, because we did spend a lot of time on this in the beginning, but I, we acknowledge that 2023 is a reset year. The factors are different that feed into this analysis. We are no longer in a state of emergency. We're back to business as usual. Therefore, rolling this out with the same six-month duration is not something this council is considering. We have not refined a consensus on duration. However, however, as you said, however, members of the community have been asked, those who have weighed in formally, informally, overwhelmingly, the vast majority does want Maple Street closed for some period of time because of the sense of community and vibrancy that it brings. So that is something we are pursuing. As far as duration, we haven't decided on a consensus, but we're looking along the lines of three to four months, which is almost cutting the duration in half. Why? Because we listened. We've talked, we've sat down with the businesses on Maple Street, the property owners, the people who live on Maple Street, and many, many other individuals, and will continue to do so. And moreover, something else that will be different this year about the closure, if we pursue it, another point I made early on was that we've done nothing to formally pursue a closure. We have not submitted an application to the DOT, we've not written a resolution or an ordinance, we are just doing due diligence in our, our process, essentially, which is a lot of engagement and discussion. Another thing that will be different are different ways of mitigating any type of seeming negative, or any negative impact to someone on Maple Street that, that is in the group of people that doesn't want it closed. Things need to be looked at very differently this year. For example, stricter, things we've heard, stricter adherence to a noise ordinance, ticketing for anyone that is blocking an alleyway, or any other access to the building and, and such. And these things are much more important. The restaurants are going to be held more accountable for how they maintain their space, also a fee structure. Things are going to be very different about how it's done. It's not going to be, it's not going to be the same, and if, if that is in fact what we do. And the last point I'm going to make, again, is that the DOT is ultimately who, who decides? Who decides if we've met the burden of the regulations set forth? And we're yet to send them any information formally.
Thank you.
Benefits?
Yes.
Paulowski, Three Crest Acre Court. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said. What I keep hearing though, despite Dr. Levine's repeatedly saying, if we're going to do anything, what I'm hearing is that it's pretty much been decided that this is happening again. It's happening for at least three months, maybe more. And I also keep hearing, democracy, democracy, people want it, people want it. This is not a democracy, right? This is a representative democracy, okay? So you can hear from the people, the majority want it, okay, let's see what we can do about it. But then you have to do the work, and I am begging you to please do the work, okay? I mean, I would think that if you guys are doing all kinds of work, that your engineer would be involved. I spoke to him today, he said he hasn't been asked to do anything, okay? My next point is, this has been a pedestrian mall for years, right? You guys pass ordinances, pedestrian mall, pedestrian mall. Greg says tonight, we decided that wasn't the way to go. I'd like to know why. Is it because the pedestrian mall route was too arduous for you guys, so you tried to find something a little easier? Read the fine print on the new statute you're looking at. There's a lot that has to be done. There's data that has to be collected. I talked to Aaron about it today. There's studies that have to be done. And then Aaron or somebody else, if he's not willing to do it, is going to have to certify, okay, using their official stamp under oath, that they have thoroughly investigated all of this, and that they have decided that this is safe and good for the community, and among other things, that I'm not so sure that you're going to be able to establish, but you have to do that. You have to establish it all. You have to dot your i's, you have to cross your t's, because if you close it, you know, without doing that, somebody dies, they're going to sue. And they're going to look to you guys, okay? And they're not going to look to the DOT, because the DOT is going to say, Summit's city engineer certified that, I said, he did all this. And they're going to be looking at Aaron Schreger. So do the work, please, please. And I don't possibly, I don't see how you possibly have time to do it for this year.
Thank you.
Hi, Diego Hoic, Nargat Court, H O I C. So I do not have a position on, or an opinion on what we should do about Maple Street, but I would like you guys to think about the following. Number one, I think I'm, I'm able to speak about this with knowledge. I have two kids in Lincoln Hubbard. I drive every single morning to drop off my little one at GPC during rush hour, eight to eight-thirty. I have to drive through Maple Street. And it certainly is nice when that street is open. However, whenever I go on vacation, I pick places like Disney, Santa Monica Boulevard. Any city in Europe, Broadway in New York City is a great place to go on vacation, and it's nice to be on the streets, having dinner. So this is not a decision that is black and white as it's being presented right now. It is a decision that is gray. And everybody who has been speaking, both at the last meeting and at this meeting, has been speaking as if they know exactly what has to be done, and that's the only opinion of what can be done. What we cannot allow to happen is for this issue to tear apart our community, like Broad Street West did last year. I think that one of the things that Councilmember Levine said is true. We need to come to a compromise, and compromise means you don't get everything you want. So, and as Mr. Paulowski said, we are in a representative democracy. We're not in Switzerland, we could have a referendum if we were in Switzerland, but we're not. So we're entrusting you folks to make a decision for the best benefit of all of us. So, you know, you'll have to debate it, you'll have to present it to us. Not everybody's going to get everything that they wanted, and that's the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other public comments. I think that's it. All right. We're moving on to the section of the meeting where we have council member comments and new business. Who wants to kick us off? Nobody.
I just want to remind everybody, the City of Summit's internship program for college students is open for applications until March 10th, and it is for Summit residents only who are in college and can apply for four weeks in June. It is an excellent opportunity if for any of the kids in Summit want experience with HR, finance, marketing, it's real-world experience for them to walk away with. So please have any children that are in college that have four weeks in June to please apply.
And it's paid this year.
Yeah, you got me.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's a big deal. Thank you, thank you. Other council member comments, new business.
I'll go. I just have a couple of updates on parking. As mentioned tonight, we're still, Rita's still evaluating these safety sticks. We're also still listening to feedback regarding the parking meters. We hear your concerns, and I know Rita's taking them very seriously. Regarding community programs, parks and recs, we should be getting a tighter budget from suburban regarding maybe playground in the next week and a half, so we look forward to showing some of those designs with all of you. I'm actually heading to Wayne probably in the next week or so to look at some of the playgrounds that have similar structures. And we also had a meeting with the Union County Director of Parks last week, I think it was last week, and we talked about Bryant Pond. It looks as though those bids will be going out from Union County in June. So the hydro raking will not start until September, October, from what I understand. So the timeline was a little bit longer than we had anticipated, but it looks like they're hopefully making some progress. And I have some updates on hydro raking on my website, which I didn't know too much about until a few weeks ago. And thank you all for coming out for your comments tonight. I think one thing that we should all remember is this certainly shouldn't divide our community. And Council President Vartan, thank you for allowing us to give committee updates. I think it's really important. We're certainly not always going to agree, but as, as the public and as a council, we take your concerns very seriously. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the updates about the Parking and Community Programs Committee. And that was a, it's a, we're moving in the right direction on maybe playground. It was a lot more money than we were thinking, but I know you and Andy and Mark and the whole, the whole group are doing a nice job with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, for allowing.
Thank you, Council President, for allowing updates. There is something that is taking place, a joint effort between Christ Church and Fountain Baptist Church. It's a little after Black History Month, but it's the presentation of Still I Rise, and so a great event that will be a joint effort. And it looks like it has something positive to do with Women's History Month that's coming up as well. So it is on Sunday, March 5th, at 4:00 PM, and I believe maybe our Interfaith Council is publicizing this. So I just wanted to make sure the community is aware of this event.
Thank you. Okay. Other councilmember comments, new business?
Nope.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.